All right, we're calling this meeting to order of the Castro Valley Unified School District, Board of Education at five. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, and then trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And trustee Rayman?
Yes.
Yes, I will also vote yes, that makes five zero. Do we have any public comment regarding closed session items? No, we do not. We are going to now re- We are reconvening to open session now. We have some action we took in closed session. What? We're taking action out here in closed, in open session. And that's what I meant, I don't know what I just said, but that's what I meant. We have, need approval of a stipulated expulsion case number two, twenty-five, twenty-six.
I move approval of item A.
I'll second.
Okay, that would be, then trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Rayman?
Yes.
And I also say yes, so that would be five zero. We also have stipulated expulsion case number zero-three, twenty-five, twenty-six.
I move approval of this item.
I'll second.
Okay, and trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Rayman?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, that's five zero. Now we will hear our mission statement from Vice President Raymond.
All right, greetings everyone. We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you trustee Rayman. We will now have our public comment instructions said by trustee Kuziak.
The board welcomes public comments on items on the agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. We ask that all remarks remain respectful and civil. If you wish to address the board, please complete a request to speak card located in the back of this room, or a Google form if you're online before the start of the agenda item. At the board president's discretion, late requests may be accepted. When your name is called, please come to the podium. Or if you're joining virtually, you'll be unmuted to share your comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and up to thirty minutes are allotted per agenda item unless adjusted by the board president. This meeting is recorded for the official minutes. In compliance with the Brown Act, the board may listen to public comments, but we cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda.
All right, thank you trustee Kuziak. We now have our school report and recognitions. And we will hear first from our presenter, Principal Fortenberry.
Excuse my mask, but I'm a little under the weather and I didn't want to share it with you guys. I'm just here to share my presentation. Good evening Superintendent Dr. Nia Rishichi, President Dolly Adams, and distinguished members of the board. I am Christopher Fortenberry, Principal of Castro Valley High School. It is my honor and privilege to be here tonight to share with you some of the great opportunities at Castro Valley High School. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the students and staff who have joined us here tonight. Castro Valley High School students and staff, please stand. And Castro Valley High School administrative team, please remain standing. I would like to introduce the team that worked so tirelessly to make all this happen. We have Mr. Kevin Baker. Raise your hand. Dr. Tracy Fields. Ms. Kathleen Stacy. Mr. Karan Brinson. And Ms. Desiree Feria. Thank you, you may be seated. Tonight, we will share our areas of growth and highlights from the following programs: New Culinary Arts, PE waiver pilot program, and Facilities Update. Excuse me. Our areas of growth, this year, we are focused on our four areas of focus are, is our redo-retake policy, proportional grading, cellphone agreement, and bathroom agreement. The reason why we're focused on these areas is because we're trying to have a site-wide unifying policy among all these. I know the district has asked us to focus on redo-retake and proportional grading, but the reason why we add cellphone and bathroom agreement is because of a feedback from teachers wanting a site-wide policy on bathroom and cellphone usage at our school. And it goes in line with cellphone policy coming to the district, and we have to make a rule anyway. So we're headed again. At least we're trying to be. So at that, that's why we're focused on these things. And what we did at the beginning of the year is we checked in with each teacher and their syllabus to make sure that they had all of this in their syllabus. And we focused on our redo-retake and proportional gradings by instructional curriculum. So for example, in the math department, we want to make sure that the integrated one teachers are all together. Integrated two teachers are all together, integrated three. And that's because our campus is so wide, and so big and vast, with so many different curriculum opportunities, it's hard to get everybody on the same page. So we figure if we can contain it within the curriculum of a particular subject, we would be doing just fine. So that's our areas of growth. Next up, you will hear from Ms. Stacy with the culinary presentation.
All right, good evening. My name is Katie Stacy, Assistant Principal at Castro Valley High School, and I'm here with Lisa Holmes, our CTE Department Chair. We are delighted to present some exciting updates to our culinary program at Castro Valley High School. First, our facility. We are moving from this, a residential-style kitchen, to this. Woo! A brand, all right. A brand-new facility with industry-standard kitchen equipment. This professional setting is a necessity for providing authentic, career-ready training. This new facility equipped with industry-standard equipment allows us to create a culinary and hospitality pathway with a clear and comprehensive sequence for student development. By adding a capstone- Hold on. Okay. So the culinary and hospitality pathway is a pathway we're hoping to add to the site. At this time, we currently have an introduction, which is our foods and nutrition course, and we have the concentration, which is our hospitality and culinary. Our new course request is a capstone course that's culinary arts and catering. This offering allows students the opportunity to complete the pathway while still scheduling and pursuing other academic courses. At this time, we have one student who has continued on for a third year at ROP. Last year, we had three students complete culinary through ROP. By providing this capstone at CVHS for students to complete in one period, we look forward to the potential growth that is available. Culinary Arts and Catering introduces students to the art and business of food preparation, presentation, and service. Students will move beyond simple cooking to build professional skills through hands-on, commercial aspects of the industry, including menu development and food costing, logistics and inventory management, teamwork, time management, safety, and sanitation. We will have guest speakers and field trips to enhance the learning experience. Most importantly, students will have genuine opportunities to plan and execute real-world catering events, gaining valuable insight into the hospitality industry. This is real-world learning where students will learn and carry out the skills needed to successfully manage all aspects of front-of-house and back-of-house operations. Our next steps include board consideration and approval, and collaboration with staff at CVHS, Eden Area ROP, and Diablo Valley College as we work to finalize A-through-G articulation and secure college articulation for credit. We look forward to the day we can serve the community with food prepared, cooked, plated, and presented by our CVHS student. Through this pathway, we are preparing students for success in the fastest sector, fastest-growing sector of the hospitality industry. The data provided supports this direction. These charts from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Economic Research Service show an increase in market and sales for food away from home in the United States. We see significant opportunity for graduates in the expanded market. And we do thank you for your continued commitment and support in creating these opportunities for students to get early, hands-on experiences that support advancement into successful careers in the culinary and hospitality industry. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Stacy. Next, we will have Ms. Feria and Ms. Manley. And then after that, Ms. Feria will do a facility update as well.
Hello. This year, we started our pilot program over our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We rolled it out with 10th graders, and they have a maximum of earning five credits for this school year. We opened it up to students who participate in NCSCAS section sports at the JV and varsity levels, in addition to marching band and color guard. And we started the enrollment process with the students last spring semester. Currently, for the fall, we have a total of one hundred and thirty-two students, ninety-five athletes, thirty-two marching band students, and five color guard students. Some wins we've already noticed is students are able to receive credit for their extracurricular activity. In addition to this, they were able to free up their space, space in their schedule, which is dropping a zero period for some, while others were able to take an academic elective course. Some next steps are going to be continuing the implementation of the program. We're going to monitor winter and spring seasons, overseeing their hours, collaboration with coaches, students, and families. And looking forward to the spring season specifically, we'll be evaluating the program as a whole using student data points collected from a survey that we're giving out to students to better refine the program for next year.
Okay, I get to talk to you about all the beautiful things that we're doing to the school. This is our six-hundred hall. With the six-hundred hall, you can see on the left and the right, this is what it used to look like. This is what it currently is looking like. The entire building received new flooring, new paint in all the classrooms. Beautiful storage, we have now storage more for the choir, and our band is illustrated right in the middle. So it's really nice. Anytime you have a chance, please come by and check it out. You got to see the updates for four oh nine already. Our beautiful gym, this is our old gym, this is what it used to look like. This is what it looks like now, that's one of our first volleyball games in the new gym. This is our old logo, which we will pay homage to and put it up somewhere. We're gonna, we're gonna dust it off and get, yeah, we're gonna get it nice and shiny and hopefully put it somewhere. This is the new logo in the middle. This is overview of the entire gym, and then we're gonna land on this. Anytime you have a chance, please stop on by. There's new flooring, all new striping, the bleachers are great, they're, we went from wooden to electric, so they're easy to pull out, yes? That's a win. They're, it plugs in, and we press a button and it all works, it's awesome. So, and then there are, we have the coloring, the lettering, and it's still a work in progress. We still are working on the banners for the NCS and our league champions, because we have a lot to celebrate as a school. We're still working on redoing the Herculean. So there's little pieces that are going to be popping up throughout the year or so, and it's just gonna look more finished and refined as we move forward. But please stop by, check it out, we have a night rally this Friday celebrating our fall sports and introducing our winter sports. And then in about two to three weeks, we'll start basketball, so you'll have plenty of opportunities to stop by.
Thank you Ms. Feria. As you can see, we have much to be proud of at Castro Valley High School. It is a work of, it is the work of every single staff member at Castro Valley High School that allows us to excel. It is also the leadership of the school board that lights the path forward, and of course, the leadership of our superintendent, Dr. Nia Rishichi, who walks the path with us. CVHS is grateful for your leadership and your fidelity to our vision and mission. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we're gonna have our student board member, Scarlett Everson, present the recognition for Catherine Murray. Yeah, come on up Catherine Murray.
The governance team, along with Castro Valley High School, are proud to honor Catherine Murray as an outstanding student. When Catherine began at CVHS, she quickly discovered the school's many opportunities, especially the American Sign Language program, which became the cornerstone of her high school experience. Starting as a freshman, she developed interpreting skills for school performances, and later helped launch the ASL Honor Society, serving as treasurer. In this role, she organized fundraisers and promoted the new club, building a community where students could engage in service, explore deaf culture, and practice signing. These experiences helped her connect with the larger school community and strengthen her leadership skills. Catherine also found leadership opportunities through the Christian Club, where she advanced from member to treasurer and later president. Under her leadership, the club grew significantly as she fostered a welcoming environment that helped new members connect. Beyond academics, she participated in track, cross-country, and soccer. Outside of school, Catherine's passion for service is evident in her many community roles. As a volunteer puppy raiser for Guide Dogs for the Blind, she trained a yellow lab named Sutton, learning patience, persistence, and compassion for the visually impaired. She also volunteered at Baywood Court Nursing Home, leading activities and connecting with residents. Additionally, her family's decade-long commitment to fostering nine children and adopting two has given her a deep appreciation for empathy, diversity, and the importance of caring for others. The governance team, along with Castro Valley High School, are proud to honor Catherine Murray.
Catherine? Catherine, would you like to introduce your family who's here with you?
So, starting over there is my youngest brother Gabriel. He's the only boy of the family. He is the loudest of us all. And then there's Emily. She is a fourth grader at Vanoy, and she's super energetic as well. She's a joy to be around. And then my little sister Rachel Lee, she's a freshman at high school. I'm very glad to have a sister at high school. And then my mom. She is always my greatest supporter, and she's amazing, and helps me in everything I do. So, thank you mom. And my dad, always supportive, and teaches me so much about life, and fosters my love for learning, so thank you dad. This is our nine-month-old guide dog in training, his name is Sutton. And he's doing great. He's, he looks really chill right now, but then you take him home, crazy.
Lovely family, thank you. All right, that was really lovely Catherine Murray. We are now going to recognize, have a recognition for Yvonne Lee. And trustee Whitaker will present the, for the Castro Valley High School volunteer.
The governance team, along with Castro Valley High School, are proud to honor Yvonne Lee as our outstanding volunteer. Yvonne Lee is the proud parent of three CVUSD students. Two have already graduated, Lauren, class of 2022, who is currently studying industrial engineering at UC Berkeley, and Andrew, class of 2024, who is studying mechanical engineering at CSU Fullerton. Her youngest, Kevin, is a senior at CVHS. Yvonne has truly enjoyed volunteering throughout her years in the Castro Valley Unified School District. While her children attended Canyon Middle School, she served as team mom for the Canyon Golf Team, helped launch the Science Olympiad program, working alongside Creekside and CVHS. She helped grow the Castro Valley Science Olympiad teams into well-respected and highly competitive groups, that is an understatement, earning top honors at regional competitions and consistently advancing to the state level. Even after her children moved on from Canyon, Yvonne has remained deeply involved serving on the Castro Valley Science Board and coaching high school science Olympiad events such as forestry, write-it-do-it, and rocks and minerals. Yvonne has also been involved in the CVHS cross-country and track teams by leading the fundraising efforts in the snack bar during invitational meets at Castro Valley High. The governance team, along with Castro Valley High School, are proud to honor Yvonne Lee.
Yvonne, would you like to tell us who's here with you?
I have my son Kevin, who's a senior this year, my baby. And then I have my husband Gary, who's standing up. I just want to thank all of you guys here at Castro Valley for just the wonderful job you've been doing in terms of just leading our students. Even though my youngest is graduating, I can still, still be involved with Castro Valley Science. But our experience here at Castro Valley has just been wonderful, extremely supportive with everything. And I just enjoy just helping out and just seeing the kids have their passions and growing their interests and all the things that they want to do. And I've been especially passionate about science and just helping with Science Olympiad, because it's just been awesome, just seeing how a lot of these kids who don't really know a lot, they may not be athletic, you know, but they find their passion in just learning new different, you know, new and different things that are really things that are at the college-level material. And I just really appreciate how supportive Castro Valley has been in doing that. It's been helping to elevate our schools, it's been helping to get the word out that, you know, Castro Valley is a force to be reckoned with. You know, when we go to science competitions within the state, they know who Castro Valley is. We are definitely a force to be reckoned with, they're a little bit afraid of us. And I think it's just by, you know, we really appreciate just the support you guys have given us in terms of just, you know, just helping everybody here in Castro Valley with everything. So thank you.
Thank you.
We are a force.
Okay, so we might have some questions or comments here from the board, maybe starting with student board member Scarlett Everson.
I'll just say congratulations to Catherine. Going to school together, like I personally see everything that you're involved in, and how you're just like a very welcoming and kind person in everything that you do. And it's definitely, you're definitely a person who deserves this, so congratulations. And to for, and all of the high school staff, I'm very grateful to be a student at the high school. Like I love, I love going to school, I'm excited to go to school. And I can see, like, at the high school, there's a place for every single kind of student. With someone who has any interest, there's a place for them. And I'm very grateful to be a student there, and I'm grateful for the community that you guys have created there.
Trustee Whitaker?
Principal Fortenberry, and staff, and students, and parents. It's so nice to see the high school here again, and the updates that you provided. Just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, the culinary program, we've been waiting for this to happen for a while. And I'm really excited, because not only, you know, when we talk about college and career-ready, this is the career-readies piece, right? It's looking at a real demand for what's happening in the economy, training our kids, setting them up for success, so really excited to see more in taste, all the things that you make. Really appreciate the six-hundred hall upgrades, where, where is he? No, just, it's just, six oh seven is a special place in my heart, room six oh seven. And it's nice to see that we've gotten a little refresh in there for the leadership kids, for the kids in band, for choir. It's just, you know, good to see a little bit of refreshment there. I really want to say for the PE credit program, this is such a great thing to have our kids that are already doing lots of physical activity, being able to get credit for the physical activity that they do. So I'm so glad to see that, that happen and being piloted. And I can't believe there's a hundred, did you say a hundred and thirty-five?
Thirty-two.
Hundred and thirty-two. I mean, that's, that's a, it's a large amount of students, and I'm sure that we'll have more. I wanted to say Catherine, your support and, and, you know, thinking and taking care of others, and just the big heart that you have, you've probably, maybe not even thought about the effects that you have on others, because you're thinking so much about just taking care of people. But this is beautiful, like what you're doing, helping others out. And, you know, what you're really doing is you're creating equity. You're creating people to be included, and included in all of the spaces that everyone deserves to be in. And it's just really beautiful to watch, and I can't wait to see what you do when you grow up. Thank you so much.
Trustee Kuziak?
Hello, Mr. Fortenberry. It's really exciting to see the culinary program blossom the way it is. That is an exceptional-looking kitchen. I'm so happy you guys didn't ask for an espresso machine, but I do think what's really cool about that program is here we are in the Bay Area, I love food, I love food, I love to cook, I love to bake. And I actually had the honor, earlier when my wife and I moved to the Bay Area, I worked at Williams Sonoma, horrible career choice, but I got to know Chuck Williams, right? And this man loved cookware, and he loved cooking, and he loved what it meant to be in a kitchen and to just bring community. And I want to challenge us, like, I want to find some ways to get some pots and pans into that kitchen, and really link to our local food culture. We have something very special in Northern California, and when you think about career pathways, let's celebrate that. So if anyone wants to talk to me, let's like, let's get some pots and pans, like, I have, I have opinions about that. And it was really great, as I was schlepping the giant gong from the marching band, was it Friday night they were practicing? I saw the new digs in six-hundred, and there are wonderful places to put the various percussion instruments. And I'm looking forward, I am told, that we are getting AC in there this summer. I know the band kids and the kids in band, there is a distinction, look it up. And other people who use that space will very much appreciate that. And with regards to alternative PE, the, thank you so much for moving forward with that. I know we talked about that. I can attest as a father of a kid in, a kid in band. Yeah, no, he's a band kid. He's, you know, he's a band kid. So a kid in band is not a band kid, a band kid's more committed, or something, something like that. So that, it's really a workout. I mean, he is, his body gets transformed every summer after he does that. And it's, there's a lot of physicality there. And I think it's great for our varsity sports as well, that we're doing that. So thank you for, I think, from, it puts us in line with a lot of neighboring districts, but I think it also lets our kids lean into their unique skills, and takes a little pressure off of them as well. So I appreciate the willingness to do that. I just wanted to acknowledge Yvonne for all of your work. I just, I'm just imagining all the science kids showing up, and they're, we're ready to rumble or something. But I do think it is, it's a gem of a program, and being a part of that's really important. I wish I shared your love of golf, I do not. But thank you for, you know, sharing that passion with the kids at Canyon. My son really enjoyed being in the Creekside program, and it was such a different thing to be in. So I appreciate you, all you've done, and I thank you for committing to work with us. Catherine, you've been here before, and, you know, you're driven by your passion, you're driven by your beliefs. It's very clear when you came and approached us before that, that you really walk this world with kindness and empathy in trying to bring people in. And thank you for modeling that at Castro Valley High School, and being a part of the fabric that makes it such a great place. And thank you for bringing your family in Sutton. And thank you for bringing your family in Sutton.
Trustee Howard.
Yeah, thank you for your, for your report. You know, you touched on several things that are really good, but, you know, that school, you have nearly a third of our students and there are so many moving parts there that it's a very complicated school with lots going on, way more than, amazing. But, you know, the culinary arts, new industrial kitchen is, I mean, you saw the gasp in the, or heard the gasp in the room when you showed that picture. That's fantastic. And all the other things you talked about are great improvements. But the one thing that really caught my eye and it's a thing that you've done before here, one of your first slides was areas of growth. And I really think that's admirable that you talk about that. You're the only school in Castro Valley that talks about areas of growth. And I think maybe we should put that on as a requirement for all the schools. So, thanks for bringing that up. I think that says a lot about you. And congratulations and thanks to Yvonne and Catherine. And in particular, Catherine, thanks for bringing your dog again. I'm happy to see him. Thank you.
Trustee Raymond.
I don't want to repeat anything I will say. Yes, thank you, of course, for the, for the report. The culinary room, by the way, you guys should take a tour and see it. Ms. Freya showed me a couple of weeks ago and it's really impressive. So, yeah, that's, that's such a great asset to the kids, I think. But I really just want to say to Ms. Catherine Murray and her family, it's been so fun to watch you and your sisters, including Hannah, who's not here, of course, and your brother and now your dog and all the babies who've come through your family. Like, it's so touching to see you guys in the neighborhood. It always has been. And I got really, like, a bit emotional, like, just hearing you be honored tonight. You guys are just such sweet people and such good people. I, it's hard for me to talk about one Marie without talking about all the Marries. And I, I'm not going to belabor it, but it's just, it's just really lovely to have watched you guys grow up and to keep watching all of the rest of you grow up. I mean, that one right there, who I remember when you were little itty-bitty one. You were so itty-bitty that you just know way you'd remember any of us. But you would, I'll save that story for your mom anyway. The rest, everyone doesn't need to hear it. It's, it's just lovely.
Superintendent Resici.
Thank you. So, Mr. Fortenberry and Castro Valley High School staff, just thank you so much for taking care with the alternative P E program, piloting it well and really holding it and following it, monitoring it, nurturing it. So, just, it was an ask of you and the community and you really have taken it on and just, I appreciate the effort of care that you wrapped around it. I also want to say I'm so excited about the culinary pathway. I have seen it in person and it is beautiful. The pictures do do it justice, but it's even more beautiful when you see it in person. And I promise to be your best taster. If you need, you know, just somebody to kind of just taste the food that's coming out of there, I'm your person. First one up. I want to say to Catherine, just congratulations for being the fantastic person that you are. And, I mean, the passion, I was reading your, the write-up and "passion for service in school and in the community is outstanding." Like, that's, that's going to take you so far in life and you're a senior this year and I'm sure that we're going to hear about amazing things in the future. So, just keep doing what you're doing because you are definitely on the right path. Thank you. And then Ms. Yvonne Lee, there she is. I heard very clearly that you said you're going to be continuing to work in the schools. We appreciate that so much. But just thank you for your support, for your leadership, for your care, your partnership, and just doing all that you have done, both at Castro Valley High School and beyond. We need that partnership. We're not the same school district without it. So, thank you.
Okay, I have a few comments. Hopefully, I won't repeat things. The Culinary Arts Program is C T E that is really wonderful to have at C V H S. I know I have had students myself who have told me that they wanted to study the culinary arts and we didn't really have that program for them to go to. They would have had to go to very expensive, private schools in like San Francisco and that wasn't really an option for them to spend that much money to do that. So, here we are, we have it now available right here in Castro Valley. I think that's great. As students start really understanding that it is here and they can do that, I think they will take great advantage of it. And so, I'm really glad, so happy to see that, the P E. So, kids who are, you know, athletes or in band or in, you know, various, I guess, you know, like cheer or whatever, being able to get their credits that way and then having the ability to maybe take an elective that they couldn't take before because they had to take P E, I think is really going to be great. An elective that they couldn't take before, I think, you know, gives them another opportunity to grow and, you know, have some more classes that they otherwise wouldn't be able to have. I'm so happy about that. Catherine, kind, giving and that is exemplified in that adorable puppy dog that you have, that you're raising for someone else, really. I think the puppy is adorable and, and I know you're a senior, but you're adorable too. And your whole family is really wonderful and darling. And then Yvonne Lee, I was listening, but then I guess maybe I wasn't listening too well because I was looking at something else and I looked up and I heard rocks and minerals and I was like, because I had studied geology. I'm going to have to, when we do our recess, come and over there and see what Rocks and Minerals was about, but then the Science Olympiad. So, I'll have to come over and say hi. Thank you for all of your service to our, our district. People like you really make the world go around in our district. Thank you so much and I'm so glad you're going to continue doing that. And thank you to all the Castro Valley teachers and admin that help the Castro Valley High run well. Thank you. Oh, and Mr. Kuziak has one more comment.
It's a question for Mr. Fortenberry. I was curious to get your feedback on how the cell phone agreement is going. As a parent, it's been a huge delta and I'm really impressed that teachers feel very empowered now to just say no if they want to. And I know in my son's classes, it's, it's been, it's been life-changing. So, any initial feedback as, as we think about our policymaking process here on the district policy? I often describe what you guys are doing as almost like a pilot project, but any, any feedback from teachers or from, from students, et cetera, on this?
Excuse me, the feedback has been positive. It seems as if the students wanted us to tell them, no, don't use your phone. You know, it's almost like, I want to lose weight, but I don't have enough self-esteem or self to do it. So, I need somebody to coach me along. So, they've been very on board when the teacher asks them. Because I've walked in classes and I've watched kids just walk in and put their phone in their little phone pocket some teachers have. Or they put it in their backpack and they don't bring it out without the teacher even saying. So, I think that the cell phone policy will take on and go well once we, you know, put it out to the whole district. I think kids were looking for that. Because the most, I would say, high nineties want to do well. If I had to say, our school is made up of ninety-eight percent well-to-do kids. And I'm lowballing.
Have you seen any changes in like discipline or just interactions at school? I know we, we don't take them away during passing period.
Right.
That would probably be a huge challenge at a high school and I'm sure we'll consider that as an option. But I'm just curious, have you seen any, any changes in socialization behaviors, stuff like that?
It is, it has impact, the bathroom usage. Let me explain.
I know, I know exactly what it is.
We had groups of kids that would text each other to get out to class saying they had to go to the bathroom. But now we have it where you can't go out of class with your phone to the bathroom. So, it impacted that as well. See, so a lot of these things seem like they're isolated, but they're layered. So, they go together. So, it has impacted, it's not, not fixed. Work in progress, but it is a positive impact so far. And I do want to say to you and Dr. Neo Resici, we can bring you guys on as guest chef once we open up the culinary.
Ooh.
It'd be like Top Chef. Let's do it.
We can work something out.
We'll do it.
Well, I just want to say thank you. And thank you for having us tonight and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, we have a couple more things. We have our student board member report from Scarlett Everson.
Okay, I have a couple things. I was at the light parade and I got to see a bunch of the schools float and Creekside won most spirited, which was very exciting. Proctor and Vanoy on the fourteenth are celebrating Ruby Bridge's Walk to School Day. On the thirteenth, Independent has a fundraiser with Canyon's Barbecue, Unincorporated and Beyond the Leaf. So, if you go to any of those places, you're participating in their fundraiser. And then Marshall on the sixteenth has their sip and shop fundraiser at Unincorporated as well. And then on the fifteenth, Vanoy is doing their campus beautification in the morning. Oh, and the high school has our second night rally on Friday, which we're very excited about.
Scarlett, you forgot something. Do you know what Thursday is? The sixty-seventh day of high school.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right. Thank you, Scarlett. We are going to now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm just going to go straight into the report. So, I have a few things to share pretty fast tonight. I've been visiting, continuing to visit our Parent Teacher Association meetings at night with our board members. Last week, we went with Trustee Adams to Proctor, which was a lot of fun. The upcoming visits that will happen next week are Indian Marshall. And then some, again, we talked a little bit about the phone-free info nights with Castro Valley High School. I'll talk a little bit more about where we are as our overall process. But over the last couple of weeks, we've had virtual family information nights and staff information nights to continue as the next part of our step in process. We had our African-American, African-American, African and Black Parent Advisory Committee last week. And so, those are some of the pictures that you see. You had principals. We were, we did a kind of overview of significant disproportionality. The principals at each of our elementary schools explained their M T S S, their multi-tiered system of supports, systems to our families and also gathered feedback. So, it was two-way, meaningful, relevant communication and partnership with our families on November third. Then we participated in the Castro Valley Rotary on November fourth and we had a facilities and budget committee meeting on November fourth as well. We, a team of us, that picture up in the right corner, was, we had a team of leaders go to the AXA Leadership Summit that was in San Francisco last week. And then, of course, talk about community. We had the polite parade, which was amazing, starting off with the mascot dance-off. And so, I got, I got some video of the, of the dance-off, but then I got some one-on-one, some one-on-one pictures with some of our mascots. So, we've got Leo the Lion from Proctor, which is our new mascot at Proctor. Of course, we have Independence Eagles and then Vanoy's Cougars. So, those are fun times during the day and then it got to nighttime. And we had the admin, the admin team that joined our tractor for which we won the prize that we won for most creative use of lights on the tractor. And so, kudos to Jason and Aaron for putting that all together. We had Mr. Grinch show up, a team of administrators, oops. And then I thought we had one more picture. Yep, that's it. Okay. And then next, actually, at the end of this week, I will be participating in the new superintendent seminar series in Sacramento. That's part of AXA. And then also the gala event that the N double A C P is throwing on Saturday evening. A couple more details about where we are in our phone-free act. So, as, just to remind everybody, the state of California has said that every school district in California will create a policy that limits or prohibits the use of smartphones, smart tech in general by July first. So, in time for the implementation at the beginning of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And so, the goal ultimately is to make sure that we're compliant with the law, but we're also in balance and aligned to Castro Valley Unified School District values. And so, what we've done so far, we've collected a whole bunch of data from families, from students and from staff. We did that during September and October. Then we summarized all that data that we collected and then we hosted the virtual family and staff information meetings, both in October and November. And we shared the data that we had so far at those virtual informational meetings. And then we also gathered some additional feedback at those virtual meetings. And then now we're at the part where we're actually creating a draft of the board policy. So, some of the information, we'll still be checking in with our schools to make sure that we really are having a, developing a draft policy that actually matches with some of the very things that Castro Valley High School is learning this year with their pilot. And that is it.
Thank you very much. We are now at, going to take about a five-minute recess. It's about six fifty, six fifty-five and we will come back and resume the meeting.
All right, we are back in session. And the next thing we are going to hear from are our California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. Our first one will be CSEA, a report President Connie Hill, or Representative. Do we, ah, here we are. Okay.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Shetty, thank you for this opportunity to speak. So what we have to report is on Monday, we had another negotiations committee meeting. I was in this room. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, December 3rd. It has been a learning process. This is my first time doing it, so it's not as fast as we thought it would be. You know, you go, you present, but there's a lot of exchange, and we are proposing some new items to discuss. The other thing I wanted to say is that we appreciate the invitation to be part of the emergency procedure committee. We look forward to sharing our input and some of what our members are presenting in all the different aspects that they do, whether they be camp security or paraprofessionals working with special education students, so their input can be included in the update for emergency situations. Also, our members gave us feedback, now that we are closing, we're close our open enrollment. They said the process was smooth. There was very few technical glitches, but they were manageable, and they were very the help assistant line was very helpful. They found a very useful tool as they made the transition into the VIVA program. So our members are very grateful for that. And our next chapter meeting is gonna be next Thursday, November 20. We are still looking for members to fill in the positions for Treasurer and Secretary. Kathy Vanderbeer and Samantha Brown are no longer going to be able to do those roles. We thank them for their support and the contributions they've done for our chapter. They have been invaluable, and we look forward for them continuing to support us. One last thing I wanted to mention is tomorrow, we are, the high school and group with Roy Justin Program are having Special Olympics. Our first event is soccer, so we'll see if the weather cooperates. If not, we'll figure out a way for students to participate and still be active. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's see. So Castro Valley Teachers Association, CVTA, do we have anybody online, or no? I don't see anyone in the audience, so, okay. We are gonna go to now public comments for items not on the agenda. We have two people here. First one, Brian Foster. And I believe each person has three minutes.
Thank you, Board President, members of the board. Last week, I listened to both of the, I think you called them online forums or something like that, on the phone policy. And I just wanted to express my initial concern that we might be raising expectations within members of the community about what you guys might end up putting into your policy. At the process thus far has been to collect information, right, to survey students and staff and parents in terms of what they want. And so that was a review of the last two sessions, there are duplicates, about what, what people want. And what people want is what they want. Everything that they wanted, by the way, could be found in the current policy that you do have, which is beyond, or much less than what the governor has directed all the school districts in the state to do, which is to really get tough on the use of phones in schools. And I put online some statements, which you may or may not have seen, that the real issue, beyond whether or not there's a ban or a partial ban, is really the implementation. And that really gets down to the teachers in the classroom, occasionally the administrators. And teachers experience all the crazy stuff that doesn't get reported, because every kid's perfect, and no one makes mistakes. But they know what's going on. And if you don't have actual enforcement of any policy and backing, absolute backing, from the administration consistently, which is the one thing that this teacher said that they wanted in their survey, any policy will fail. I mean, I could regale you with stories of high school seniors who put phones in their underwear to keep it away from a teacher, including me, during a test. And rather than thinking that was a bad thing, in my case, I was admonished because I embarrassed a student to, to request that they hand over the phone during a test. That she was embarrassed by that. And that's kind of an extreme example, but some students, whether it's 10% or 20% or whatever it is, some students feel that the phone is their right arm. You've already had feedback from some parents who feel the same intensity about the use of their phones. And by asking everybody what they want, I think that you're setting up expectations that the community is going to get what they want. And at some point, I would hope that the school stands up as leaders and not followers, and specifies a policy like other schools have done, like LA implemented theirs in January almost a year ago. And they're experiencing what it really means to have a ban on phones in schools. So, again, my concern is, let's, let's, let's establish a draft policy, float that out, and get feedback on that. Don't ask people what they want. That's like asking drug addicts how they want their drugs administered. Instead, be leaders. Teach them. Thank you.
All right, we are now gonna hear from Jamie Molina.
I'm gonna read it, because then I'll be all over the place. Hello, good afternoon, board. Good evening. My name is Jamie Molina, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And I'm gonna keep this very respectful, because I truly care about the work that I did here and the students and families I supported. I'm here tonight because I'm experiencing difficulties. I felt like I was pushed to resign. My last day is the Friday. And I'm experiencing difficulties receiving my fine paycheck under a labor code that admin is telling me that is required, but I live up the law. And it's not truthful of what they're saying to me. They're saying that I will not be able to receive my paycheck till November 21st, and my vacation time, if any, till the end of another month. I understand that there's different rules that we have to follow. However, my hope is to simply, that my wages can be processed promptly, so I can close out respectfully and peacefully here at Castro Valley. And I also want to mention that there's a discrepancy with my leave of absence balance, because my October pays up reflected, I had 59 hours of vacation, and some sick, which I took because I felt stressed before leaving. And I have records and documentation, and I just have a request tonight that I respectfully ask that the district review my final paycheck and my leave balances to ensure that everything is corrected and handed, and handled in a timely manner. And for all transparency, the reason that I resigned was for lack of growth. I asked for my BCBA hours to be signed off, and I was denied over and over and over again for my fieldwork after promoting that if I went to school in the summer and I aced all my classes, I took six classes, and I passed my last biology to transfer to Cal State to finish my psychology degree. I was ignored time and time again. And I'm not sure why that happened, because we really do love the community here. And this is my daughter Faith, and she wanted to say something.
Hi, I'm Faith. My sister goes to Palomero, so my brother goes to Canyon. And my mom's a very hard worker. She attends all my events. She never wins one. Even though if it's the last minute, she still pops up. And I've been noticing she advocates for people herself. And Jan, thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we are on number 10, consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda. I'll second.
All right, trustee consent agenda. Student Board Member Everson?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
I'm a yes for all items A through I. On item J, I am a proposed chaperone for that trip, so I just want to recuse myself from item J. So I'm voting in favor for 10 A through I.
Okay. And then trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Berman?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So that is whatever number that is, 5.5, I don't know, whatever it is, yeah. Yeah, for A through I, except for J, yes. Okay, however you want to write that, Amy. Okay? All right, and then we'll go on to number 11, and we have 11A, which is an update on our facilities master plan, or the FMP, information.
Yes. Well, this is part one of the facilities master plan that we wanted to bring to you. And part two is going to be in December, so tonight's meeting is actually going to focus on a couple of elements, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Sharon True-Quinn, who will present a couple of slides, and then turn it over to our presenter tonight.
Good evening, board. I'll wait a little bit. So, well, tonight's kind of a hybrid. So me and Chris, we're here from Renal, Renal Clark Architects, is in person. We have Kristen Rose that is joining us virtually. She's from foresight planning. So, you know, just to give you an update on our facilities master plan. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview of the purpose of today's meeting. So as I said, it's an update, so we're still busily trying to put all the different elements together and refine it to give you a draft in December. And, but we want to start to review some of these items with you. So we'll review the master plan elements and the proposed scope of work with all the different schools, and then review next steps. And I want to, you know, reiterate that our facilities master plan is really a living document. It is something that we continue to collect data and add to an update and bring back to the board for approval. And, you know, as we do more projects, that also adds to it. And, and one of the things we look at is for you to give feedback on your priorities. And it's also a key for approval, we hope, that in January, because we need it for, for Prop 2, for our state funding, to have it approve updated master plan. So next slide, please. So I started to talk, but this is pretty much our timeline for our master plan process. Currently, we're at kind of step three in terms of reviewing project scope. Where we've been pulling together costs, but our cost isn't quite ready for you yet. We're gonna present that in February, but right now, we wanted to get a scope overview, because we have so many schools and all the different projects that we're thinking of. We want to start to get some prioritization from you. So with that, and the next slide, I'll hand it over to Kristen.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. So all of the elements in the plan adhere to requirements for participation in the school facilities grant funding program under Proposition 2 or AB 247, which requires a submission of an adopted facility master plan for funding. It includes a space inventory, capacity analysis. We have added engagement summary and design guidelines. And it also includes a master plan scopes of work and a financial summary and evaluation. Next slide. So it's important to note that the master plan includes all scopes of work to bring the existing facilities to like new condition and in consideration of capacity and programming needs. So the plan is a long-term plan. It extends to multiple implementation phases. And the plan, like Sharon said, is intended to be dynamic, living documents that are updated regularly to reflect project completion or changes in need and priority. So with the understanding that the FMP is a global look at all potential projects, and that our needs will often exceed our available resource. and that our needs will often exceed our available resources, that's where prioritization is really critical. So typically, this will build from those must-do items, which are immediate needs and critical infrastructure to the should-do items, which support capacity and maybe operational needs. The would-like-to-do items are focused on program optimization and planning for the future. And then future considerations are those long-term projects we want to account for, but we know might be outside the scope of the resources available. As we move through those priorities, we are looking at identifying additional cumulative funding that is required. Next slide. Okay, so a key component of the plan is the building inventory. Next. We look at the quantity of classrooms across all sites and break those out by construction type. And this serves as the as the foundation for our capacity analysis, which we'll review with you in further detail at the December board meeting in conjunction with the district's demo offer. Next. The space inventory, so it's a next level down from the building inventory, helps us understand the types of spaces across each campus and how they're being used. Insights here help us understand how to create efficient use of space. Next. So each of the site master plans includes a site profile with relevant site data and a map of existing facilities. This is completed for all of the sites, but for timing purposes, we're going to go ahead and skip ahead to slide 23 and talk about the engagement summary. So you can see all of the sites. If there are sites that are larger, they have a key plan to indicate the focus area. I think we need to keep going. Yes. There we go. Okay. So this is just a quick review of the community engagement we've completed. And this information has previously been presented to the board. So next slide. So the planning process really began in 2022 with our sidewalks and the development of the facility opportunity study. And then throughout 23 and 24, we expanded that study with some preliminary costing and the identification of areas of focus. And then we prepared for our extensive stakeholder engagement. Next slide. In spring of 2025, so this year, we engage with staff, students and the community. And then we continued that engagement in the fall with departmental focus groups. And now we're sharing that development of the master plan in preparation for the plan adoption in January and any potential future bond or funding for the projects. Next slide. This is just a review of the engagement completed so far. We've completed departmental focus groups, staff and community meetings, student meetings, and utilize various outreach channels to communicate and collect input from stakeholder groups. Next. What we heard from focus groups is a desire for safety and security, the single points of entry, perimeter security, parity to ensure consistency across programs and facilities, flexibility to support long-term adaptability, a plan for growth to ensure we have available capacity for any incoming students, technology integration, storage needs, acoustic and comfort, so those environmental considerations, sound isolation, daylighting, air quality, temperature control, also in consideration of community use, so making sure that we're designing facilities for shared use with our school community as well as our external community. And then wellness and inclusion, so incorporating wellness spaces and designing with universal design principles to ensure accessibility by all. Next. We also provided a survey and thought exchange to the community. And this is a review of those results that were previously shared with the board. There's a general consensus across all groups and we see kind of top priorities being things like classroom modernizations, spaces for student support, new classrooms for capacity needs and so on and so forth. There is some variation in select areas. As an example, kitchen renovations for nutrition services were a top priority for students, which, you know, typically would reflect their direct experience with meal service, but it ranks lower among other groups. And then conversely, spaces for community use were ranked highly by community members more so than students, staff or families. And so really what we look at there is that these differences highlight the importance of a balanced approach that considers both the universal and some of the group specific needs. Next. So based on the input we received, we've developed some key areas of recommendations. So first is focusing on core needs first, including strong infrastructure and security. And then looking at strategic replacement of any aging portables. Number three is modernizing learning environments to support a variety of programs, flexibility and adaptability over time. Four is supporting student wellness and inclusion with efficient spaces to provide wraparound services. Number five is activating outdoor and shared spaces to extend the learning environment. And number six is continuing that transparent communication by maintaining engagement with stakeholders throughout the implementation of projects. Next slide. Design guidelines. So design guidelines serve as a framework to outline the ways in which facilities should be designed to support desired educational outcomes. And this is a summary of the elements that are included in those guidelines. Next. So it's identifying things like administrations that are both welcoming and secure and student support spaces that provide for confidentiality and effective delivery of support services. Libraries with differentiated space and the ability to support a variety of group sizes. And then nutrition services spaces to support quality and efficient food service operations. Next. We also included guidelines for intentionally designed early education and special education spaces to support the specific needs of these students. General education classrooms that are flexible and adaptable and then science laboratories that are adequately supporting and appropriate and safe for science instruction. Next. We also developed guidelines for career technical education spaces that are designed to industry standards. Making sure we have dedicated visual and performing arts spaces with flexibility for collaboration and breakout, including multi-use spaces that support large groups capacities and a multitude of programming. And then creating competitive level spaces for athletics that also welcome the community. Next. All right. So next, we're going to look at proposed scopes of work and for time purposes, we'll highlight a few key sites. So let's go ahead to the next slide. This is Castro Valley Elementary School. So some of the proposed scopes of work are a new two-story classroom building, so really trying to maximize the capacity within the footprint that we have. So it includes some early education classrooms on the first floor and some general education classrooms on the second floor. And this is supported by some outdoor play areas with secure fencing and things like that. A new NPR kitchen building has been identified as well as a new art building to support backup programs, expanded administration and library. We've also included some upgrades for the hard courts and the artificial turf field. When we go back to the last slide.
We're working on it.
I mean, for what it's worth, I don't know if the other board members reviewed all these, but I I took, I spent a lot of time on this, so we, I don't necessarily, if this is going to be a problem, I'm not tripping. Yeah.
We appreciate it.
Well, I mean, since we're here on independent, Chris, you want to?
Sure, I'll go over independent. So on independent, we're really looking at, we need to expand the capacity for your early ad and so creating a new complex there for early ad that then taking advantage of kind of new construction there, can we also provide some additional after-school spaces, art spaces, et cetera? And then also looking kind of further out, looking at a two-story classroom building for expanded capacity when that's needed. And then a new science center and then some modernization to some of your other existing spaces. Updating hard courts, so really trying to find ways to activate those outdoor spaces and then creating some new outdoor learning areas as well.
Yeah, we also have the new kitchen expansions to nutritional services.
Yeah. And so that you'll see that consistently too, those kitchen expansions and anything that supports the operations of those kitchens across the sites in order to facilitate, you know, increased food service and efficiency. Let's go ahead to slide 45, the Creekside Middle. But it's.
Understood. Slide 45.
We just keep going to.
Yeah.
Next one.
There we go. Okay. All right. So at Creekside, we're looking at how can we expand capacity? So we've added some classrooms, including a two-story classroom building. We've expanded on existing space like the gymnasium and created a new lobby space to create some better kind of community space for that entry. We're looking at reconfiguring library and some adjacent spaces for student support and library functions. And then same for administration. So just making sure we're adhering to some of those standards and then general modernization. In terms of the fields, we're looking at some renovated fields with artificial turf and track. Unique to this site is also looking at, you know, the feasibility of a central kitchen and preparation space and then as well as a warehouse. We've also expanded parking and reconfigured how kind of drop-off works to make that a bit more efficient as well. Next slide. And then at the high school, a few things here. We again are looking at, you know, admin expansion, reconfiguration for that safety and security, library expansion for some additional support spaces and really activating that space and additional classroom spaces. Replacing aging portals on that site with some CTE programming, including automotive. And then also a new music band and choir classroom. Some additional renovations to the gymnasium, particularly around the locker rooms. And then some additions for athletic support, team rooms, concessions, storage, some stadium upgrades, as well as a aquatics center operating. Okay, and then we can go ahead to slide 49. There we go. So next steps for us are to incorporate any project scope and prioritization feedback. We're going to provide a cost review and a capacity analysis summary and develop an implementation plan. And then we are compiling that draft plan for your review at the next board update in December in anticipation of the final plan. So next, and with that, I'd say thank you and want to open it up to any questions that you might have.
Michael, sorry, trustee Kuziak?
I have a few questions. If I could just get clarification, again, I'm sorry to be done. Portable versus modular versus permanent? And my understanding of the last one, we talked about this a few years ago, was a lot of modular construction is kind of treated as permanent. Am I misunderstanding that? That it can be two-story buildings, et cetera. Can can we distinguish about the use cases, how we use them when we don't use them? Yeah.
So in kind of the more basic terms, like a portable or relocatable is, it depends on the foundation between a portable relocatable and a modular. That a portable is on a wood foundation that's more easily movable or, you know, relocatable. You can take the same building and renovate it and set it on a concrete foundation that is bolted down a little more. And then it's more of a permanent modular building, right? And and then our permanent buildings are what we call like our stick build, so that they are built on site. And they're most of the time for us, it's our older buildings, or when we call our permanent building, like our 100, 200 buildings. Those are our permanent buildings, right? 900 is a modular building.
Thank you. Okay. So it, because it looks permanent. Yeah.
And so then the portables on the field, what we set as interim housing portables, we call, I think we name it F-Wing. Those are our portable relocatables.
So any new construction we imagine in this plan, really good chance it's going to be modular, right? Because that's a prefabricated product.
You know, that's something we would do a cost analysis on. And that's, that that is, I am researching and talking to folks about it. And there's a lot of innovation in that part. I still want to leave it open because it also depends on the market and how things are going. Like we have sometimes our stick build, depending on the contractor, comes in about the same price or just a little lower. But it's also depends on like what type of building we're building too, right?
I just have any response to that real quick, not because it's about this study, but you know, when we're thinking about the future proofing of like climate change and the change of that modular buildings and changeable buildings are becoming more and more something that industry is looking at in general because of ability to change and adapt, ability and reduce construction costs over time. So I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to understand the difference.
I'm going to try not to confuse the issue. So
Please do, please do.
I'm going to really try not to. So modular construction is anything that could literally be moved, right? And it's typically limited to
Classroom space.
No, no, 12-foot wide module. Anything could literally fit in the back of a truck and literally hang out on the 580 or 880 on the freeway, right? So there are prefabricated structures that are built with a steel moment frame and they're designed, those those structures are designed to last 30, 40, 50 years plus, right? So those are modular, right? They're also prefabricated. And prefabricated architecture is not necessarily always what you're imagining.
Yeah, I grew up in Florida. I know it's changed though.
Yeah, absolutely, right? That being said, yes, so most, most modulars are most modular structures. They come together, they're put on on wood frame like Sharon mentioned. But you could put those, you could put those on a permanent foundation and be anchored and they're now required to be compliant with the code and be permanent. And by the way, the not so great looking T-111 siding can be replaced with a nicer finish and it can blend in just as well with any like other permanent structure. Right? And can be customized, like you, like you mentioned.
And I appreciate like your comments too. I I am not trying to cast judgment on
No, not at all.
the methodology. It sounds like it's a given our tax structure and given certain environmental thing like
It's conversational, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I have, I have more questions. I'm interested about, you know, around the design, around the the design guidelines. I had mentioned like in some of the questions that I sent, like how do we preserve the Castro Valley High School sign? And it just made me think more broadly, do we need to do an assessment of our school sites of just maybe historically significant stuff? Like, I mean, I I just wanted to kind of put that out there broadly. And if we can incorporate that somewhere to say that, you know, we we need to, as much as like, I I think this infrastructure of many of our schools is pretty not in the best place. I I'm wondering if if we need to have a process of identifying structures or some things or
Yeah, and that's, that that would be something as, you know, for our master plan, we have, you know, an element that's the implementation plan. Which I think is a little confusing because then after the master plan, we also have another implemented, like a more full implementation plan. Right? So this implementation plan that we're talking about in our facilities master plan is a more broader prioritization of scope of like, this is what we think we want to do if we have this money and when, right? And when that money comes, when the funding comes, then we look at each particular project and how we schedule it, how we plan for it and the little nuances of looking at the design guidelines again and how it pertains to a certain project, say for the library or for a new building or for even restrooms, right? So then we have additional focus groups and we have different feasibility studies, existing facilities assessments that we will do for infrastructure. So all that is wrapped in the plan. So all that is wrapped in the planning of like specific projects that will happen later. And you and you will welcome your input at that point.
Appreciate that. And just Gary, only have two more, only have two more things. Okay. Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah.
The the whole point of doing those facility assessments is so we can prioritize what is needed on each respective campus, right? Because it's not going to be the same things at each campus, right? So that's so that's the main reason why we're going to do.
Thank you. And one of the things I really appreciated about some of the designs I was seeing is that it seemed to lean more into the building footprint rather than fences to affect a safe school environment. I think one of the critiques we've heard is don't want to make it look like a prison. And I think that's 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 correct. And I think among a certain generation in Castro Valley, there's hard feelings about putting fences around schools and what that led to. But I I think there's this tension about community use, right? Primary use is educational, but we do, we do work in partnership with the community. So I was interested about the feedback we got about community use and wondering if we are going to reach out to our community partners, hard other other districts around to say, hey, what what, how would you want to access this? What could we be building? How do we maintain them? All those questions about the community use aspect of this.
Yes, so we that's that's something that's ongoing that we've been, you know, we've worked with hard with the our use agreements and with different projects. So similar to like our project base, that's something we will continue to do as we implement the master plan later. And to make sure all our community partners and different stakeholders are reached out to, you know, that we do the proper outreach.
It was just something that we brought up with the, continue to bring up with the facilities and budget committee. So you you are on point.
Yay. My last one is kind of a statement and it's not to throw any wrench into anything. I'm not throwing a wrench into this. I just wanted to say that I remember Charmaine Benther, who was on this board. And when we were doing the projects, you know, God, that was about twelve years ago. When when Parveen started here and we quickly did the facilities assessment. One, the engagement is like next level now. I I just again want to say to the haters out there who say that this is not a transparent district that engages the community. Y'all are doing it. You're doing it with the phone policy. You're doing it now. So thank you for that. Because it felt very heavy-handed last time because I was in some of those meetings and it felt much more staff-driven than community-driven. So I want to thank you for that. I remember Charmaine very specifically at one of the meetings when we were talking about facilities. She was talking about Palomeros and whether, why it's appropriate to to have such a small elementary school. We we know that there's other reasons why we have to maintain that site as an elementary school. But I go back to some of the questions that I shared in 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 some of the questions this week on the agenda and I do think as a board, we should talk about, do we have the right footprint? I do think we need to do that. And I know it falls out of the scope of the specific things. But I just want to see if there's any gray space, time, whatever for us to say. Is it appropriate to only have two middle schools? Should we have three middle schools? Should we have TK through eights? Do we have the right configuration using the sites in the right appropriate way? So I just, I want to put that out there to see, can there be space in this process to have a conversation? Do we have the right, are we using the right sites in the right ways? Are there alternatives where we could save money? What if we could keep our kids in our neighborhoods longer so that we don't have to rely on transportation? Et cetera. And I know we have limited means, but it feels like if we're planning, we should at least dream a little bit.
So excited you said that because that's what we're going to be talking about in December, at the December meeting.
And we're going to be talking about money then, but we're going to talk about.
Capacity, capacity and really looking at use and all those things. So that's the next phase of this conversation.
So will we be able to like take Lego blocks and like put it one one school over here and that's what I know. So like I'm trying to visualize how we could imagine.
So
Stuff around.
I can add. So yes, there is a part two, which is what we shared with you, the cost analysis, cost of all of this, right? I I go go back to to your comment earlier about is there a space and time for for that conversation to move blocks, right? Again, it's that that's outside of the scope of this, right? Because we, the from the beginning, and I know they've shared back into twenty twenty-two. That's been our, right, our our way of working through all of this is based on what is currently approved. We have not received direction until, well, at least now we're, we've heard it, right? We haven't haven't had that conversation. So that's not part of any of the scope that's been that we've, we're tasked to do, right?
You're not, it's not what you're tasked to do, but to trustee Whitaker's point. So there's an opportunity for us to maybe create space for what what are we, because I, because I do think from an equity point of view and we think about how are we serving this community? And just limited finances, like how we use our space, I think. I think oftentimes, if there's an observation, and I don't know if this is true, we are often reacting to the the status quo in in a given time. And I I would like for us, before we ask the community for investments to say, are we doing the right investments? Have we thought like everything through here? That's all.
Sure. And then so I want to make sure that we we did ask the community and they they prioritize, right? So they and and we've shared the slides about their priorities, classroom, because we're a growing district, right? Modernization and things like that. They're still, we have a a good amount of work that needs to be done from the original. And that's what, right, we're doing the update now for the, from the master facilities plan. If we look at back in two thousand sixteen, when it was approved, there was still a good amount of work. Or at least what's identified in the in that project and the facility's master plan that we've not done, right? Because the measure G was a hundred twenty-three million dollars plus the additional money that we receive from the state for the reimbursements, right? Thank you. And it's 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 a team effort here. At the same time, like if you look at the list, there are things that were identified that we we have, we did not get a chance to do because of the limited funds, right? So so that's why we always, we, this is an update. You'll see the things that we're, we will identify in the report. Everything that's what we completed from the measure G, the ones that are are in the process and the ones that are not in the process. So so you'll get all of that and then we can have conversations about some ideas. But because part two is already in December and January is when we are requesting for your approval, at least review and approval in January. There that's, yeah, so that's a little bit more work that will, that we need, that needs to be done in terms of that.
We need to, we need to get to this requirement, which is great, but we still have the flexibility because things can change. So even though, thank you.
Yeah, trustee Howard.
It's a reasonable discussion to have, but I agree with Susie. It's not the time to have it. And the things you're talking about are phenomenally expensive. Way beyond the, in my opinion, right now, the ability of the district to ever pay for, ever. We had an estimate from ten or eleven years ago of new schools, which is essentially what you're saying would be, you know, a hundred million dollars. I don't know what it would be now. So.
Yes.
Not talking about, I'm talking about how do we currently, that's all. I'm just saying, how do we
You don't mind.
Effectively use the sites that we have. Could we have more two-story construction to support higher capacity, et cetera? I'm just, or a different type of school use. That's all.
So and and we are going in that direction, right? So that if you look across all the scopes, most of our elementaries have two-story buildings earmarked within their plan because we're building up. We don't have that much space. You know, real estate is a premium at this point. So that what we look at also is that for our sites, what's the best for them? And where to put buildings, right? So that these sites potentially can't change, you know, later, ten years later, twenty years later. There is some of that flexibility to be able to make certain changes if the board decides to. So that you're not kind of cornered in to one thing or another. That our classrooms are designed to be flexible and, you know, that.
Justy Howard.
Yeah, you know, I wanted to say in summing up, I hope that you guys have done a good job in laying out. I went through all those very carefully also. We had a great chance last week to look over them in person with the two of you and that was terrific. And I think what you've given us are a long list of what I would call aspirational possibilities. But I think the challenge for us in December is going to be to figure out the maybe ten percent of what you showed us that we can actually afford. Because I really, I mean, I think you had one estimate, I think, but I'm not sure it was for this, but the estimate is north of a billion dollars. Castro Valley does not have a billion dollars to spend on a bond. So I think it's going to be a big challenge to try to figure out what's the right combination of those things. We've got a lot of input from a lot of different groups. Essentially, all the stakeholders, you guys have spent a lot of time on that and we appreciate that. But I think that's going to be a big challenge. I mean, I think there's room for what you're saying, Mike, but I think maybe it'll be not the next one, but the one day after that. I mean, these things don't happen overnight. So thanks for your comments. But anyway, thanks for all your hard work and I look forward to December.
If I could just summarize real quick, when it comes to the development of that implementation plan, one is you are not alone. Most districts have this issue where their need is far greater than the resources that they have available. And so developing a reasonable implementation plan to carve out what specific projects you can do in the near term is an essential part of the facility master plan. And so we will bring that to you and show you what the possibilities are there and how we might phase the implementation of these projects over long periods of time. And then the second piece is that the plan and all of the data that is gathered in support of this plan and understanding your facilities is the foundation for you to have any kind of future informed conversations around your facilities. But our goal is to collect all that information so that you can have a conversation that includes all of the available data. So you're not guessing at something or reacting. You can plan ahead strategically.
Okay, one more time, trustee Howard.
Really quick, I, you know, I think we should be thinking in terms of multiple bonds here. That may be three bonds over the next twenty years. And you've given us a good start on that. And that, the other thing that I like about that is not building up such a huge accumulation of bond repayments and limiting what future boards may see that they need ten years from now that we had no idea that they were going to need. So I don't think we can spend all their money. So anyway, but I think it's a great start.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I have the next presentation. So I'll stay.
Okay.
The next one is a construction update. So while Amy's pulling that up, we're going to have some duplicates because I have slides here that also shows the high school with culinary in progress and the gym renovations. So I'll go through those a little more quickly and I have some canyon stuff too. So I have some things are unique. So moving forward with Canyon first, so this is the infrastructure or the the PG&E side of the electrical vehicle charging project. And this is for our two electric buses that we're able to get with the Carl Moore Grant. So you look, I'm almost kind of taking you down this tour. That's what I'm kind of doing with Canyon because it's been really fun to watch, at least for me. It's right outside my office. So this is them coming around the fire lane. So they trench all the way from where their main switchgear, so their main PG&E's main point of connection is actually next to the gym, between the gym and the mechanic shop. And so they go from there, down the fire lane and trench all the way down. And they turn and then they start to go into the current, you know, bus and maintenance courtyard. So you have, I I also wanted to include some more staff for fun, just to get, you know, some pictures. And so Lynn and Aaron here is pointing at the switchgear. So this is a hundred amp switchgear on our side that we put in. And PG&E is going to bring their own equipment to connect to it. So that's what they're trenching for, so that the switchgear will sit where that truck is back there. And then this is the trench for it. So there's another look at the side of the switchgear and the trench. And all the connections is coming up to and the foundation that they're doing for PG&E's equipment. And this is the athletic field. So it's starting to take form, you know, things are starting to come out of the ground, but more in concrete work. So we have a pathway, we have our our foul poles, our fence poles that's starting to kind of stick up. So this is if you are kind of where our older portables were at the drop site trailer, right? This is actually just north of where we were trenching for our EV. And so you're looking to the right and you see some foul poles and they're actually starting to pour a ramp and and form stairs. To the right, you're going down this pathway towards the existing softball field. So we have our ADA path of travel. It goes all around to our new baseball softball multi-use field. And and where Lynn is standing on the picture on the right, that is our valley gutter that will channel our rainwater. So it looks like a walkway at this point, but slightly sloped. But this is the size and magnitude of it that's channeling all that water that's going to come down the hill and away from these fields. So you'll kind of look around. So you'll start to see as we walk down, pretty much the whole north side of the field is this huge gutter. And on this slide, on the right picture, it starts to form like a bigger V ditch, as they call it, and and more volume. And you come around to where the old concession stand was, where the baseball. And this is a curve walkway. And to the right of it is our bioswale or retention that in the video, our contractor was talking about, it helps to treat our stormwater. We have three of these on site. And it also creates kind of a welcoming area and plaza for us. And then this is, you're coming back around again to kind of start to close to where we started. Well, the one on the right is another view, kind of a top view of this curved walkway slash ramp. That's coming up to the field. The one on the left is our stairs, kind of midfield, as we call it. Add to the basketball courts coming up. And I wanted to highlight there's a rainbow here. I don't know if you can see it. I ran out last week to take this picture of our little rainbow when we had our bit of rain. So you know, kind of our light at the end of the tunnel with this project. And then we moved to the high school. So you know, some before and after pictures of the gym. It's been great. It looks beautiful. We'd love for you to visit. Different pictures, different areas, shots of it. I know you've seen it already. This is a progress picture. This was before they started cleaning. So it's a little messy. Fingerprints, but Monday they started cleaning, wiping down things. Every day it looks more beautiful. So you know, we have our commercial kitchen, there's seven stations. Next door is our demonstration area that doubles as a dining room space. You can see the tables that are about to get set up. We just picked some simple stainless steel movable tables that can double as instruction space, dining space, dry storage, our scullery with our commercial dishwasher. And that is it. Any questions?
Uh, trustee Bowman.
I just have one quick question about the EV charging.
Yes.
I I feel like I should know the answer to this, but the two buses that we have, where have they been charging?
They charge at the mechanic shop right now. We set up a temporary one that's hooked up to our existing switchgear. And with this current project, what it does is that it's agreement with PG&E that they bring service.
Tested over 4,800 students in the Sback test. So we anticipate that the California dashboard will be going live sometime very soon. And in this presentation, I'll be reviewing some high level data summaries of Castro Valley Unified's performance with a specific focus on ELA and math. So this first chart that you see here represents the last 10 years in ELA or English Language Arts performance. There's no Sback in 2020 due to the pandemic. And again, for Sback results showing in grades three through eight and 11, you can see that last year in 2025, there was a district-wide growth in ELA with an increase in one percentage point over the previous year. This chart shows district-wide Sback performance for math. And you can see here that in 2025, last spring, there was also an increase in one percentage point. And that was an increase over the last three years. This chart or these charts show a comparison of Castro Valley's performance in comparison to state, county, and some of our neighboring districts. CVSD performed better than Alameda County and California, the state of California in ELA, math, and science last year. And with the surrounding district comparison on the lower chart, Castro Valley ranks in the middle with Alameda, Dublin, and Pleasanton outperforming Castro Valley, whereas Hayward, New Haven, and San Leandro did not perform to the same level. These next set of slides will look at the elementary and secondary breakdown. And here you can see ELA performance over three years for each of the elementary sites. Again, that's testing grades three through five. And most of our elementary sites showed decreases in ELA performance this past year with the exception of Jensen and Vanoy. Both of those schools showed growth and Palomeros maintained at 57%. Here again, you can see for Sback math, again, in grades three through five, three-year comparison broken down by elementary school. Most of our elementary sites did show a decline in their math performance with the exception of Chabot and Jensen. Both of those schools did show growth and Proctor maintained at 78% proficiency. Here you can see a three-year comparison of our secondary school performance on the ELA Sback. For middle schools, all three grades are tested, six, seven, and eight, and grade 11 is tested at the high school level. Both middle schools and CVHS last year showed growth in ELA performance, whereas Redwood and CVVA showed a decline. And here again, our secondary schools with the three-year comparison for Sback math performance. All of our secondary sites did show growth in math performance last year, last spring, over the previous year. The next series of charts will break down the student groups by race and ethnicity and then also by program. So this slide highlights the breakdown in the district-wide ELA Sback performance by race, ethnicity group. We do see a trend in decreased performance for students meeting or exceeding ELA standards. The most significant decline was our Hispanic and Latino students who showed an 11% decrease. This is also for our district-wide ELA performance last spring, broken out by special program. We can see that our socioeconomically disadvantaged students reflected an increase in performance overall of meeting and exceeding standards with a decrease for our students with disabilities as well as our multilingual or EL students. In our math Sback performance last spring, this slide shows a breakdown by race, ethnicity, student groups and showed again, a overall trend in decreasing performance of the number of students or percentage of students meeting and exceeding performance standards in math. Again, this is district-wide. We did see a significant decrease for our Hispanic, Latino students, 15% percentage point drop, as well as our African-American students with a 14 percentage point drop. This next slide here, our ELA, or sorry, our math performance for Sback, when broken down by program, showed an increase in the percentage of our students meeting or exceeding standards for socioeconomically disadvantaged students, while our multilingual learners, EL students, and our students with disabilities showed a decline, or sorry. Our multilingual learners maintained at 24% meeting exceeding standards in math. But our students with disabilities showed a decrease in three percentage points. So again, this was a high-level summary of our Sback performance as a district at elementary and secondary levels with a look at trends over the years, both by site and as a district, as well as our disaggregated student groups. And we know that there is a lot to unpack there. We know that we have more work to do and we have areas of growth to focus upon. We've been focusing on those areas already as far as strengthening our systems and fortifying our practices in a number of key areas. In elementary, we are in year two of implementing UFLY, which is the University of Florida Literacy Institute. Instructional practice is focused on systematic phonics and phonemic awareness, which is aligned with the science of reading. We've also been aligning our designated ELD time across elementary sites to ensure focused instruction in language acquisition for our multilingual learners. New this year, we are incorporating math assessments at the elementary level on a trimester basis to provide data on how our elementary students are progressing. There's traditionally been a focus on reading and literacy benchmarks. And so this expansion into regular math assessments will provide us greater data and allow us to provide more focused interventions. Systematizing our tier-two reading and literacy instruction with a focus on essential skills is really aligned also with our significant disproportionality work around MTSS consistency. And finally, release days for third through fifth grade teachers focusing on math professional development is another area of focus at elementary. In secondary, we're closely examining our tier-two designated intervention time, also known as Condor time tutorials or Trojan time, depending on the site. And so that work is really aligned, again, with our significant disproportionality efforts around MTSS consistency to ensure that students who need the interventions are accessing it or receiving it. Teachers are also expanding upon their use and implementation of rubrics, identifying proficiency levels and honing in on essential skills and developing common assessments to align with what we want our students to know. We are really focusing the work of our data walk-in talks to examine grades data as well as the use of designated intervention time to ensure that students who aren't meeting standards are being supported. And in support of our multilingual learners, we're honing in on integrated ELD across the content areas with a focus on academic vocabulary and language acquisition. So those are efforts, key efforts in elementary and secondary. And as a system, you'll see a lot of overlap with our significant disproportionality efforts in this area as well. We are continuing to focus on building more robust MTSS structures to ensure that students are receiving effective tier-one, two, and three instruction and intervention. We're developing equity walkthrough tools and supporting the use of culturally responsive practices. Also engaging effective family partnerships and really effective and critical two-way communication with our families as well as incorporating more alternatives to exclusionary discipline. So we know that looking at our CAS data provides an important summative view of academic achievement in our district. We know that we have work to do. And in one area, the significant disproportionality, data gathering, and analysis process really afforded us an opportunity to do a deep dive into a great deal of information, not only on student academic outcomes, but also a comprehensive review of our various systems, which included surveys, focus groups, and a wealth of data. We know that a lack of consistency in our systems require further analysis and additional focus. And so our efforts continue to focus on examining our practices, utilizing data to measure our progress on improving student outcomes and fortifying those areas which we know to be impactful on improving student learning. So we know we have more work to do and we're committed to the task. But that concludes my report. I'll open it up if there's any questions.
And Betty, trustee Kuziak.
Appreciate you sharing this data. You know, I was thinking, I was thinking about President Adams, the MTSS support. Is, are we calling it MTSS for math, the interventions that we're doing there? Because I know that you talked about that last year as wanting to see more of those kind of, you know, providing, and I think that's wonderful to see that being implemented. So what I'm hearing from this and when I look at what you're describing, it sounds like we're really good at taking a moment, looking at where kids are, redirecting them, get the right support. I've seen it in action at CVE, exceptional MTSS model, right? As a board member, when I see these data that show real deltas between different different groups, that that concerns me. And I'm like, so what, so what is the strategy? And like, when I see the dip in the math numbers that seem to be all groups, is that consistent with everyone in the state who took the test? Are we seeing similar dips in math competency? And then my second thing would simply be like, what should a board member be doing? Or, I mean, y'all are directing yourselves, but I mean, what? How do we make sense of, is it a socioeconomic thing and what do we do, obviously, to provide other wraparound services to support our students? But it just seems like we're not making any, if anything, we're going in the wrong direction in some of these indicators or all populations. But, so don't we, how do we interrupt this now? Thank you.
Let me, let me answer that and then Ms. Wong, you can add on. I think one of our biggest issues as we were, for the last couple of months, including last year, we have done this deep data dive, right? Because we are seeing that, you know, there are some inconsistent practices that we have around our multi-tiered system of support. In some places and spaces, like you said, CVE, right? We know that they have
It's the place to be.
It is the place to be. But it's, there's consistent practices school-wide in regards to interventions, when and monitoring, like very closely monitored system where every three to six weeks, they're looking at their data, they're monitoring and they're changing up. Their interventions are strong and effective. They switch kids' district, I'm sorry, schoolwide. And they actually really know what are the essential skills that each of their students actually need to have. And then if it's not tier-two essential skills that they're looking at, like what are the foundational baseline skillset that students really need to have for tier-three? And do they need that additional level of support? We don't have tight systems like that at every one of our schools. And that's just being really honest and transparent. We believed that there were more of that consistency, consistent practice across our schools. And what we're finding in our interventions, and you could talk to our teachers, our principals, et cetera, is that we're not as consistent as we thought we were. And so we got to get back to that. And that's, part of that consistency is part of the, you'll hear about the significant disproportionality because that's a lot of it. You saw that our African-American students and our Latinx students were taking, going in the wrong direction. So we have, as Ms. Wong said, we have work to do. But I do deeply believe that we're in, we know the work that needs to be done. It's doing it consistently across our entire district, in every classroom, at every grade level, in every department. And monitoring that very closely, much more closely than we have in the past.
Ms. Wong, I was just going to say, I specifically, I really like seeing that third to fifth grade PD day for, on a math focus. Having, you know, taught in this district and now teaching in another district, finding kids, you know, at the secondary level without the basic math skills when they're like maybe, maybe even in ninth grade and they don't know how to do fractions, they don't know how to do basic math skills yet. You have to put them in an algebra class, right? It's kind of like a losing game, right? They're stuck in Algebra I and they can't really do basic math. So it's really, it seems to me, it's like they didn't get that basic math back in elementary school. So teaching the teachers to give them the basic math skills is, sounds like a wonderful, really great thing to do. Because I think there, there are, there can be teachers who can be great English teachers, great at language. And then maybe they're not as good sometimes in the math, and I think that's what they might need. So thank you very much for putting that in there and implementing that in there. So that's really good. In my opinion. Yes.
All right. I just wanted to go back to what I was asking with regards to math. Seeing that type of decline, is it consistent with what we've heard nationally? And then I just want to also acknowledge that schools are often asked to do a lot of things that we don't necessarily have the resources, but we try really hard. I don't think, particularly in Castro Valley, sometimes we don't preach, appreciate the number of kids who do go hungry at night. The number of kids who are facing housing instability. And there's only so much we can do, but we can control things like teachers we hire, the curriculum. So is there a challenge with our math curriculum? Like, how do we say like, oh, we're seeing these declines, maybe we need to look at that? And I know, I was really excited when we heard last year about the new Florida model, the University of Florida model for reading. It seemed to be very like, a good idea. So I'm just curious to know, like, that dip we're seeing, is it a national trend? And then what other things are you looking at to repair that?
Did you want to?
So it is, yeah. I mean, I could hypothesize that the reason our math scores are lower than our, our language arts scores are because our multi-tiered system of support has been in past years much more focused on language arts than math. But we see what Dolly's saying, we recognize a need for math, and so that's why. And they were, they were pull-out PD, they were release days for the third through fifth grade teachers where they came and got incredible professional development. And, and really it is, and like you said about TV, it's like, but we still have to do tier-two interventions for math too. We can't just do them for language arts. And what that means is if they don't master an essential skill, we are responsible as teachers to reteach it. So, and then the other thing about that really quick is that then we have new math trimester assessments, which will raise the bar. Because the expectation on kids is they have to be able to perform these grade-level standards and we aligned it to Sback. So there'll be some continuity in how they're, in how they're practicing.
And if I can speak to that, at the secondary level, a lot of the work has been focused on looking at what those common assessments are, what those essential standards are at the secondary level, and making sure that teachers are getting clear on, you know, what are the essential skills? What is it that we want our students to know? How are we assessing it? Does that assessment line up with what we were, with the curriculum and the instruction was really focused on delivering? And then, you know, what are we doing when students aren't meeting that? And how are we using that data? And that practice and that regularity and that collaboration around student data and, you know, that inquiry piece is really critical to understanding where the students are at and how to adjust.
Justy Howard?
Thanks for the report again, always, as always. You know, these, and I'm glad that our scores are actually quite good. I mean, on these, I mean, certainly in a relative sense. But at the same time, there's a little, they're a little bit frustrating and even exasperating because I've been watching these for 25 years now, since the ancient STAR tests, and the numbers are basically the same, you know? And they're, and the differences in the, in some of the groups are really exasperating. And we haven't, certainly haven't cracked that nut yet. But you know, I, you guys work really hard on this. And I think now we do actually have some things that, that I think are the most promising things that we've had in some time. And that's the whole concept of standards-based grading and that whole effort to do that, which involves retesting and so forth. And I think those things, I think that has legitimate hope for some improvement there. And the other thing I always try to keep in mind is that these scores are different than the in-house scores. And I tend to trust the in-house scores more than this one. Because, you know, the state of California has a test out here that they say is against the standards. And if you look at the slide you showed there of the whole state, would half the state or more is not meeting standards. Something is not right here. So once again, I still trust the in-house scores more than these. But I think, you know, Castro Valley is doing everything it can here to try to make this work. And I appreciate that a lot. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much. Those are really, thank you for all the work you're doing on this and all the implementations of programs in the MTTS and all of those things that are helping our students do better.
Anybody else? Okay. All right.
I think we are at the last item here, which, oh, one more, right? Which is, two more. Oh, yes, sorry. We have approved compliance and approved monitoring CIM for Significant Disproportionality Plan.
So, good evening, members of the board. Good evening.
Sigis.
Executive Cabinet. My name is Afi Sklud. I'm the Director, you want me to do a little? Director of Elementary Educational Services. And tonight, Feng Li, who is our Coordinator of Student Services, and I will be presenting on our Significant Disproportionality Plan. We're going to start with a quick overview of Significant Disproportionality. We'll review what our budget looks like for it. And the majority of our time will be spent on our plan for improvement. So as you know, Castro Valley Unified is in significant disproportionality due to three years of overqualifying Black or African-American students for special education under the disability of other health impairment. The other health impairment category is most often or most commonly associated with Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder, or ADHD. The California Department of Education requires districts to address this overrepresentation with a Significant Disproportionality Plan. So after a very comprehensive data review, we were able to identify four root causes that are contributing to the disproportionality. And this is going to sound kind of repetitive because it's what April was alluding to and Dr. Rishichi. But the findings really centered around the need for consistency within our implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, integration of culturally responsive instruction and practices within classrooms, within schools, within our district, the expectations and accountability around forming and building effective, two-way, meaningful partnerships with parents, community, and students, and then also the lack of consistency in providing alternatives to suspension. To suspension. When we looked at all of this data and information, we developed a theory of action that states if we implement a consistent district-wide MTSS that incorporates culturally responsive practices and non-exclusionary discipline, then we will create safe, inclusive, and bias-resistant learning environments which will enable staff to support Black or African-American students and their families, strengthening community partnerships, decreasing inappropriate special education referrals, and ensuring all students can reach their full potential academically, socially, and emotionally. In collaboration with our educational partners, we decided to name our focal students CV Scholars. Our 63 CV Scholars are comprised or made up of 54% Black or African-American students and 46% Hispanic-Latino students. I want to point out that part of our responsiveness to the scores that we're seeing the trends, because it's not just on CASP, right? Our local data also shows Hispanic-Latino students, there's gaps with the scores. We intentionally brought in Hispanic-Latino students. So these students are in first through 12th grade and are at one of four schools. Castro Valley Elementary, Canyon Middle School, Creekside Middle School, or Castro Valley High School. I do want to point out that even though we only have four focal schools, Significant Disproportionality affects every one of our schools, and we are doing this work district-wide. And now Ms. Li is going to talk about our plan for improvement.
Thank you, and good evening. Before I get into our Step Three Plan for Improvement, I would like to acknowledge the writing team who put in countless hours of dedicated time to meet, discuss, write, gather feedback, rewrite, and then repeat the cycle. And so our writing team is, consists of Director of Educational Services for Elementary, Afi Sklud, Director of Educational Services for Secondary, April Wong, Director of Student Services, Kristi Padilla, Coordinator of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Jelisa Eagles, and Coordinator of Special Education Elementary, Dr. Doris Quack-Dellenbach, and myself, Feng Li, Coordinator of Student Services. So our biggest challenge, I will say, as a team was finding time that overlapped. But we did it, and we made it happen. And our team reviewed the extensive qualitative and quantitative data tied to the root causes and identified strategies to develop high-leverage activities that would lead to our expected outcomes. As we drive our work with our theory of action, I know what came to my mind often was what Ed Services always talks about, which is our why, which is our equity, our what, which is through our multi-tiered systems of supports, and our how, which is through building capacity. And we also know that our most important criteria of success is through our student outcomes and our students' success. And so after every writing session, we would ask ourselves, how will what we do make the most impact for our students? For our CV Scholars, for all our students, while centering the whole child? And so our work focused around four core high-leverage strategies and the activities to get to our expected outcomes. And so what you see before you is the required documentation that we must submit to California Department of Education. And so for each of our high-leverage strategies, we were asked to complete all the components that map out what that would look like. So for Strategy Number One, we focus on building and implementing a more robust, bias-resistant, multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS. About two-thirds of our participants surveyed in our focus group stated that our MTSS is not consistently implemented, which leads to inequities, and therefore the need for more consistency. Our expected outcome is that when we strengthen and codify our MTSS to better support our students' academic, social, emotional, and behavioral success, then we will increase their academic success. And so what does this look like? MTSS is an educational framework that provides universal, targeted, and intensive support for academics, behavioral, and social-emotional needs. Some strategies and supports include best-first instruction, response to intervention, our student support teams, and coordination of services team referrals. And so MTSS is a tiered approach that is proactive, it's evidence-based, and it's data-driven to ensure students receive the appropriate level of support. So developing an MTS handbook with staff training provides a written system which can take out personal biases or emotions and objectivity for which students get what supports, and instead maps out steps for our students to access the most inclusive educational opportunities and then determine the appropriate response to referrals to meet our students' needs. And then this also interrupts any fast-tracking to the most restrictive learning environments. And so adding an additional intervention TOSA will also help provide case managing, management, monitor support for our CV Scholars, and build out and implement this system with fidelity so that our students will benefit from this robust, bias-resistant process. And so students will then therefore be more, supports will therefore be more appropriate and consistent. For Strategy Number Two, we focus on deepening student-teacher relationships through the integration of culturally responsive practices in all school settings and district-wide. The need comes from students' feeling of belonging. From our last California Healthy Kids survey, our Black African-American students reported, on average, the lowest of all ethnic groups on their feelings of school connectedness, that school's boring, and that they can, they could identify a positive, caring adult relationship. We know that relationships matter in school success because they promote academics' success, improve mental health, and support identity development by fostering a sense of belonging, excuse me, and counteracting effects of racism and bias. And so this strategy will increase our students' sense of belonging as measured by our student survey data. So for our proposed activities of culturally responsive teaching is an evidence-based practice that has positive effects on student academic performance, confidence, and identity. Its research-based approach connects the students' cultural backgrounds with their learning to improve educational outcomes. We will, we will show pre- and post-data on students' sense of belonging and school engagement, will provide anti-racism/anti-bias training to our staff, and create an observation tool for equity walkthroughs in classrooms to increase teachers' culturally and linguistically responsive class, teaching strategies. So through creating a more inclusive classroom culture, including educational experiences or enrichment activities, we will provide opportunities for students to be seen, validated, affirmed, and to build and bridge a stronger connection to school where all our students will attend more and where they can thrive. In Strategy Number Three, when we talk about the whole child, we have to include the support of all our caring adults. So Strategy Three is around building more effective reciprocal partnerships with families and community. Our parents and families are an integral partnership in student success. In our survey data collected from our Black African-American families, it was reported inconsistencies with the kind of outreach that they receive. Many of them feel a lack of connection or quote, "lots of calls for behavior" which leads to a hesitancy to pick up the phone because most of the phone calls are usually not positive. There's a lack of rapport between teachers and parents. And so we are looking to increase the outcomes of parental involvement as measured through our climate, school climate survey. So Strategy Three is focused on creating the two-way, meaningful school-parent partnerships. Our children can benefit from as many caring adults in their lives as possible. And that means that two-way partnerships from both school and home play important roles in developing the whole child. We can agree that knowledge is power, and when all adults are made aware of the resources available to our students, then the amount of support multiplies. So schools have resources and strategies to support students, but we also know parents have resources and strategies to support students. And oftentimes, the communication looks more like a two-conversation. So it's school to the parent. We, what we really want to do is make it with our parents. So we should be having engaging, meaningful conversations and including our parents because they're an asset to our team. They're a partner in our work together. And so this exchange of information of how to access the resources will provide learning opportunities for everyone. So we are all aware of what resources are available, and most importantly, how to access them. And so building the stronger two-way partnerships among our school and parents will increase our sense of empowerment and advocacy to access support for all students and will increase then the meaningful partnerships with our parents. So in, for Strategy Number Four, in gathering our data, we noticed higher rates of suspension data for our Black African-American students. And California Ed Code strictly outlines regulations for suspensions. And it's all, it also has mandated schools to provide other means of correction. So this led for, led to our Strategy Number Four of building the capacity for and consistently implementing alternatives to exclusionary discipline, in which we identified the need to build out and deepen our work for restorative practices. So to build the capacity for and consistently implementing alternatives to exclusionary discipline, we start with implementing a system to document student supports. Currently, there are many ways in which our teachers and support staff are documenting student interventions. However, this tool in ARES can help centralize this information because we know in many cases, there's a team that's providing this support for our students. And so this tool can help monitor consistencies and track student support. And when talking about alternatives to discipline, two-thirds of our respondents stated that they weren't aware of the appropriate interventions aside from the traditional punitive consequences. And so similar to teaching and reteaching, when a student is struggling in academics, we, we know that we need to reteach, right? But some, but when we are talking about behavior, we need to shift our mindset. And we must also be able to provide opportunities to reteach student behavior. And so students must be provided opportunities from learn from their behaviors through reflection and accountability. And so a toolkit of preventative interventions will also help increase our ability to respond to student behaviors in a more engaging and transformative way. So a progressive discipline matrix also helps ensure that we're providing appropriate responses, also ensures that we're providing equitable responses and consistent responses, and also providing multiple opportunities for growth for students. So restorative practices is an evidence-based strategy to respond to discipline with positive outcomes. And I want to recognize that our district has invested in this work, and we've trained staff over the years. But we'll deepen this work in the next coming years so that we expand the use of restorative practices and languages, and a restorative language to our CV Scholars, and ensure that parents understand the benefits of it, and also provide coaching to the staff who are providing the restorative work. So how did we build out all our activities? I want to acknowledge that, as mentioned earlier, our writing team involved collecting feedback from multiple groups. Our Ed Partners Group, which consisted of parents of Black African-American students, community representatives, general ed teachers, special ed teachers, site and district administrators, provided, we, we shared our plan with them. We also collected feedback from this group. We also shared our plan and collected feedback from our Ed Services team, which included our leadership staff and also our teachers on special assignment. So how will we fund this plan? So the budget was developed using 15% of our existing funds of our federal IDEA, our Individuals with Disabilities Education Funding. And so these monies, which is usually restricted to special education, but we are able, and we are required to actually expend this money for general education purposes. And so there is a Budget Form One that shows the allocation of the funding. And we've also provided the breakdown of the budget line items. You'll see, we have proposed to use it to fund our new teacher-on-special-assignment position, contracted professional development hours, including additional certificated time card hours for professional development, parent engagement activities, and student enrichment activities. And so with that, I'd also like to open this And so with that, I'd also like to open this up. Thank you for your time and open it up to any questions and also invite if any questions are also addressed to our team that they are also here to respond needed.
Trustee Kuziak.
Thank you so much for the comprehensive presentation. I was curious about our scholars, they know that they're scholars, correct? They've, they've been invited to this. What, they don't know?
That is our next step in our.
That'll be their, okay, that'll be the next.
Approve the plan first, that will be our next step.
Sorry, sorry. Once they become scholars, how long are we going to stay with them? Like, are we making a commitment to those kids at CV through high school that they'll be receiving some of these special enhanced engagement?
The SIGDIS plan itself runs through September 2027. However, our work, knowing that if this, when this, this plan is in place and the work happens, that then it'll become part of our practices. And it is so that we can show that there is improvement and progress and the work that we're doing is positive. And so part of that is what we're doing now should be something that we sustain for everyone in the future.
I have one question. So is the focus on the 63 students or on the students at large?
For SIGDIS, our focus has to be on then the 63 students that were identified because it addresses the reason why we are in significant disproportionality. However, we know that what we do for one will benefit all. And so the work is also focused on work throughout the district. And a lot of our activities will name that it is work throughout our school and throughout our district. The monitoring and the progress, the progress monitoring will then also be focused on the CV scholars. It's just a more manageable and a group that we've identified to make sure that we can assess our program plan and how our students are improving.
Can I just expand on that a little? So when we're talking about like the consistent implementation of MTSS or the professional development, all of the teachers are going to get those things. All of the teachers will be held accountable for those things. Culturally responsive practices, we're going to do equity walkthrough tools, not just on the teachers of the, of the focal student kids, for CV scholars, but for every teacher in our district. Because the, really, the, the point is, sorry, is to change practice so that we're doing these things because we've done these things. We just need to do them better and more robustly.
And more consistently. I think like over and over and over again, every data point that we went through was like inconsistent practices. You've got to be consistent throughout your system.
Trustee Howard, did you?
It's a good plan, and it even hearkens back to the previous presentation where it might have some impact there, as you say, as we learn to do better. And this is a good testbed, so to speak. But I want to put in a plug for something else, and that is, a few years ago, we had an extensive discussion about disciplinary actions and, you know, expulsions and suspensions. And our expulsion rate is down radically in the last 10 years. And, but our suspensions aren't quite. But I remember part of the conversation was that we were trying to discourage suspensions where you were out of school. Because the idea was, they're just fallen further behind and that's probably going to feed bad behaviors and so forth. So I, you know, I hope that we can revisit, as part of this maybe, and this testing that are doing, we're doing to ourselves, maybe we could revisit that idea of having in-school suspensions. So this, you know, I guess it's sort of like detention hall or something like study hall. But it did seem like a better idea than kicking the kid out and hoping that some way or other they'll do it by themselves, get better. Anyway, thanks very much for it, a good plan, I think.
Trustee Howard, I just wanted to add, so we, so we are looking at non-exclusionary practices and more, more restorative way of doing discipline. So absolutely, we're looking at those things that make sure that we do an, we're an educational organization and that we do some instructional pieces when a student makes, makes a bad decision. And how do we, how do we make sure that they're, they understand what they did and why they did it? And can they, what can be different? And that there are consequences to their behavior? And how do they repair harm to what they, whatever the, the issue was? They, to another student or to a staff member for that matter. But, but we are trying to work on non-exclusionary practices.
Trustee Raymond.
So just, I would, you know, talk about that a little bit, actually. But I really appreciate the focus that I saw in this plan with all the different, you know, goals, that there does seem to be such a focus on restorative practices, non-exclusionary discipline. You know, one of the, one of the tenets of like a FAP, you know, of that is, is that it's a accessible, you know, learning. And when we are excluding our kids from the classroom or from the school site, even if it's for a half a day, they lose a lot, especially kids who are on the edge academically. For whatever reason, it can be, speaking from experience, very, very challenging to get that child back up to speed, even to miss half a day, a day, you know? So I, I think that that's going to be really interesting to see what comes of that. The other word that I really latched onto in listening to this presentation is consistency. And I mean, that, that's something that comes up a lot here. When we're talking about things, not just about this issue, but, you know, other things that are being unrolled in our schools. It's the idea of consistency. How are we making sure that everything is being carried out in a consistent manner so that our kids are getting the same expectations upon them in every setting that they walk into within our schools? So I really appreciate that. I think that'll be, again, really interesting to see. First of all, how do we approach this idea of making sure that these things are unrolled in a consistent way for students? And then also to see how are, you know, how, how does this focus that we're putting on restorative practices, how does that then? How are we doing consistently, you know? So, and, and what kind of waves can that send into other aspects of carrying out policy within our district? So thank you for the work you guys are doing. It's important.
I would like to move approval of the compliance and implementation monitoring for significant disproportionality plan.
I'd like to second it.
Okay, all right. Student Board Member Everson.
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Whitaker. Trustee Kuziak.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond. And I will also vote yes. It's going to prove six zero.
Thank you.
Now, our last thing.
May, may I move to approve this last thing?
Yes.
Yes, I move to approve the personnel report.
I'll second it.
Okay. Personnel report. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
I will also vote yes, five zero. Now, Board Member comments, reports. Anything else? Student Board Member Everson.
I don't have much. I just was very happy to represent Creekside at the Light Parade Coaching the Cheer Team. And I got to see not just the Creekside community, but just like all of the Castor Valley community. And it makes me very grateful to live here in such like a close-knit community, growing up in this really nice area. And so, yeah, it was, it was very nice to see such a nice community outreach type thing.
Thank you. Trustee Whitaker.
I was at the Facility and Budget Committee on the fourth. And then I just wanted to make a statement. I know that we're going to be heading into the holiday season and start into our breaks, and that can be very complicated for a lot of people, both positive, negative, and anything in between. And I know for our kids, some of them don't all have safe spaces or are facing, you know, food insecurity, especially with everything going on with the SNAP program right now. So just want to send a lot of positive energy. And so whether it's our staff who is deciding to go hang out or not hang out with their family or their chosen family, our, you know, families are traveling and dealing with the fun stuff with their flights being canceled, to our, our students who, you know, will either get some downtime and/or, you know, be in spaces that maybe aren't the best. I just want to send a lot of positive energy to everybody through this season. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kuziak.
There. I met with the Educational Foundation, and I want to use this opportunity to remind people that you should give them money or you should join them. They always need community support. In their efforts, particularly to provide scholarships to the community, please do that. I have been to so many band things, I've lost count. But as the official photographer of the parents' boosters, it's been a lot of fun. I was at a competition out in somewhere, I think it was Dublin. And then we also were at the, the parade. And it was really great to see the marching band marching at the parade. I remember the very first parade I saw in Castor Valley, our marching band was on the back of a trailer. So the, it's really, I, I, if you ever get a chance to see the, the band, it's really, there were some challenges a few years ago. And I'm, it's wonderful to see the maturity of this program and just, there's just these excellent musicians and artists. It's just, it's a, it's a fun space to be in and it's a privilege to get to be there. I, I do want to make a shout out. This is something that unfortunately happened at the end of the, of the parade, kind of off, off-site, as people were heading out. There, there was an incident where someone lost their life. I am, want to just make a shout out, though, to those people in this world who know CPR for all their heroic efforts. And it made me really kind of reflect in speaking with some folks that maybe it's time to get certified again. I, I, it's, it's tragic that that happened, but I'm also grateful to the people in our community who step up to try to assist. And I think yesterday was a really good day to fight fascism. I think today's an excellent day to fight fascism, and I think tomorrow is a good day to fight fascism. So I want to remind people just to keep on standing up, using your voice, using democracy to, to fight for what's right, to make sure our kids don't starve, to make sure that people have healthcare and that we, we still have community at the end of all this. Thank you.
I only have two quick things. One was, as Lavender said, the Budget and Facilities Committee last week, and that was, it went well, appreciated that. And we were very pleased with the Light Parade. It went very well. I think it's maybe the best one we've ever had. So thanks for everybody who was there. And there were a lot of kids from the schools there, a lot.
Trustee Raymond.
Okay. I feel like it's been like three months since we were all last in this room together, but I know that's not true. Life is moving very quickly and very full. I just want to say, Trustee Whitaker, I really, I personally appreciate hearing those words. This is a very complicated time of the year for me personally, and it's been weighing on me a lot. So it was a nice reminder to just give myself some grace. So, in any event, I attended ROP last week. It was a good meeting there. I went to opening night of nine to five, which is, the next morning, The New York Times published their editorial on whether or not women have ruined the workplace. So that was a lovely juxtaposition. But one of the nice things about going to nine to five was also volunteering a little bit with the newly formed theater booster parents and selling cupcakes, paying intermissions, so it was fun. Also got to go down to the Light Parade the next day and check everything out. The mascot dance off was hilarious and like an absolutely wonderful bomb for the soul. So highly recommend that. Also highly recommend attacking the Light Parade like I did this year, which was show up early, walk the road, see all the floats, say hi to all the people, and then go home. So it's completely perfect. My husband and I were down there until probably right about before the parade actually started, but we were able to see everyone, see everything. Then the other thing I did last week, the Contra Costa County School Boards Association actually had a Q and A with Attorney General Rob Bonta. I attended that. It was, it was great. We had access to him for about 45 minutes, and there were only about 25 of us present. We had a fantastic conversation about the work that he is doing in the Attorney General's office to fight fascism every day. And it was truly, truly a good use of time. And I think that's everything. Oh, I just wanted to close by wishing my oldest son, who is a senior at a high school, Hank Wagner, a happy 18th birthday on Friday. Got me in all kinds of places. And thank you, everyone.
Okay. All right. I think I have three things for, that I, however, represented the board. I met with Nia, of course, the week before. Went to the Proctor PTA, which I believe you had mentioned. And then I went to Van Nuys for their Dia de los Muertos celebration, which was really cute and got to talk to some of the families there. And it was really nice to go there and just see what they did. They had some cute little like miniature ofendas that were, that were really darling. And that they had a very large one in the front that was done by the school or the adults, but then they had little teeny tiny ones that were done by the kids, like in shoeboxes, that were very cute. And, and some of them really well-done, too. So that was very nice. So that's it for this time. Anything? All right. Well, with that, we're going to now close the meeting.